Good afternoon. Steve Hitchcock, appearing on behalf of the appellant, the city of Pontiac. This is a case in which the Court of Appeals, Suez Ponte, raised an issue that had not been brought up in the plaintiff's complaint in the lower court, had not been argued in the motion for summary disposition in the lower court, had not been raised in the appeal, was not briefed in the appeal, but in their decision, and without asking for any supplemental briefing on the issue at all, decided that they wanted to construe the emergency manager's order as only applying prospectively, but even prospectively not to all of the existing indebtedness, but to a certain category that had not yet accrued. The words they used was that it somehow didn't apply to the already accrued actuarially required contributions. The plaintiff, or pelle in this case, now raises the issue that somehow that this is a retroactive order and that that would be a violation of the law because it would affect existing contracts, cites to you the LaFontaine case of this court, where you clearly though said that if the legislature wants something to be retroactive, then you need to specifically say that in the legislation. You can't just presume that. Well, the whole purpose of Public Act Four, the Emergency Manager Act, was to deal with existing obligations, existing contracts, not just future contracts, while future contracts may have been important also because obviously you didn't want a local city, township, whatever, incurring new indebtedness that they couldn't pay.
The counsel, the language, good afternoon. The counsel, the language says continue. It seems like it emphasizes for the future, doesn't it?
Well, I don't think the word "continue to pay obligations," or in this case, "contributions to the trust," "continue" would include, in my mind, all of the obligations you currently have that need to be paid, that you haven't paid. They have a continuing obligation to pay that June 12th, 2012 contribution.
But you're talking about something that, you know, ultimately happened a year prior. You're talking about making them, you know, you're talking about something that happened in the past. That's the question. An obligation that was created in the past, and it just helped me to understand why the legislation doesn't seem to contraindicate that as it pertains to looking towards the future.
Well, because the legislation we're referring to-
Is this a legislation? Let's start there. Is this executive order legislation or not?
I think he's carrying out legislative authority. It's giving some-
So you do believe it's within the ambit of LaFontaine, then?
Well, I think it is considered, it could be considered legislative because the legislature gives him the discretion.
Then you conceded that LaFontaine analysis applies to this executive order.
Yeah, but in this case, the legislation, the granted authority clearly said that he had the right to reject or modify.
No, no, no. You want to do antecedent legislation. I'm asking you very specifically, is the executive order itself legislation? And if it does, it seems to me you better tell us how LaFontaine principles apply to it.
Well, he's issuing an order that applies to any continuing obligation to pay indebtedness.
Let me make sure you understand. LaFontaine is an analysis that is required when the legislature arguably is making a retroactive change in the law. Follow me so far?
Yes.
So the question then is, as opposing counsel has suggested, that whole analytic framework of LaFontaine should be imposed on the executive order. So the question first arises, is the executive order legislation of the kind that is covered by LaFontaine? Do you follow my question?
Yes.
What's the answer?
Well, I don't think you can look at just the executive order. You have to look at the authority that gives him the right to issue an executive order.
So that argues in favor of treating it like it's a statute. I mean, we're trying to figure out, if the legislature were to say, "You don't have to make good on that past due amount," we would put it through the PACES, that new statute, the LaFontaine PACES, correct? So do we have to put an executive order through those same PACES? What are we supposed to think of an executive order as? Is it close enough to a statute, or is the fact that it's authorized by a statute sufficient to put it through those same PACES?
Or is it something different than legislation?
Well, I don't think that has ever been answered by the court.
That's why we're asking.
I think you would help us.
Counsel, let me ask you this question. So maybe this is a way to answer what the Chief Justice and Justice McCormick are getting at. So you might say, well, sure, we could assume that the executive order 225 is subject to the LaFontaine test, but the first LaFontaine factor is whether there is specific language providing for retroactive application, and we can find that, we don't have to look in 225 for that, because 225 is just merely carrying out the emergency manager law, which itself has language providing for retroactive application. Is that the answer to your question, to the question?
Well, certainly the legislation that authorizes the order has language in it that allows it to be retroactive.
So even if the EO is subject to LaFontaine, I thought this is what you were trying to say, I don't know whether you're right, but I thought this is what you were trying to say, that the emergency manager law itself provides that, look, the EOs that are going to come out pursuant to this are going to be retroactive sometimes, and that's good enough. Is that what you were trying to say?
Right. If you can't isolate the order from the legislation and try to determine whether you-
You have to read it all together. That was your answer.
You have to read it all together. That's what I'm trying to say. And if you read it all together, the legislation clearly does say he can modify existing contracts. So on the day that he issued the order, it was an existing contract. He could modify-
I really don't think you apprehend the significance of the questions being put to you. It strikes me that how we construe this language may change radically if it's just the pronouncement of someone authorized to abrogate contracts versus whether it is a legislative act and therefore must be assessed under LaFontaine. I don't think you understand the difference between those two.
The order in isolation is not a legislative act.
Well, why do you want to link it to, he's authorized to make, admittedly, under PA4, he is authorized to abrogate existing obligations, including collective bargaining agreements, correct?
Correct.
So the question here is whether this executive order, in fact, does, and the extent to which it does, correct?
Correct.
Stop. Now, the question further is, is are we obligated to give his order its plain ordinary meaning, or must we, as we do when a legislature has purported to do something retroactive, do the LaFontaine analysis? Are you following me so far?
Yeah, I don't think you have to do the LaFontaine analysis.
Okay, now why?
His order, because his order is only carrying out the legislative action, which gave him the retroactive authority. I think you do have to look at his order and see, in his words, did he tend to only make it apply to prospective debt? Because he could do that, even though he had authority to apply it to existing obligations. If he didn't intend to do that by his language, then it wouldn't apply to retroactively to that legislation, or to, excuse me, to that debt.
Let me ask the question. If we just have to give his order the plain meaning, why do we, how do we get to the point where we conclude that it involves the accrued as opposed to future debt?
Because his order doesn't say anything about accrued or not accrued. He says, "I'm applying this to all current contribution obligations."
He doesn't say "current," does it?
Continuing, excuse me, continuing. But I think that that's the same as current. They are both the one that was due July 12th, the one that will be due July 13th, 2013, both.
Does the existing obligation, is that part of the continuing obligation?
Sure. It hasn't been paid. It's a continuing or current obligation. It sets their owed. And what would happen if it didn't apply to that would be the same thing that happened with the 2011 one, which was before his order, a year before, before he went through this process with the Treasury. He got sued in the court, and the court found, or granted a judgment for the amount of the 2011 payment, because there was no order by him, which he would have had the authority to do if he had done it earlier, to stay any payment of 2011 obligation. If this order doesn't apply to '12, then he'll have the same effect as he would have had in '11. A judgment could be entered against him. And I think if there's any, I mean, the court appeals seems to also then start to look at evidence outside of his words, because they mentioned the letter to the Treasury where he's making the request. But I think if you look at that letter, it clearly shows his intent was to include the 2012. That's the very reason he is at the moment-
We don't get to look at the-
-seeking that.
Antecedent stuff. We just look at his words, right?
Well, unless you conclude that the words are ambiguous and you need extensive evidence-
Do you think they are ambiguous?
No, I don't think they're ambiguous. I think that the current obligation to pay the 2012 payment was an obligation that existed, and it was a continuing obligation that existed every day that occurred after it matured on June 30th, 2012, and it was an obligation owing, and that was included in his words. So I would ask that you just conclude that his words are not ambiguous, and they do include that payment in 2012. If you think they're ambiguous, then there was some record to support that, because those documents between the Treasurer of the State of Michigan and the EM, in which they went back and forth about this issue, where he's seeking their permission, clearly describe the June 2012 payment. Not to preserve any other time I have.
Good afternoon. Ron Letterman, on behalf of the plaintiff trustees. Sitting with me at counsel table is my partner and trial counsel, Matt Henze. I would like to waive the so-called three-minute bullet-free zone and welcome the panel, I'm sorry, welcome the panel to ask me questions immediately.
Well, let's start with the, you've asserted that this order should be not given its plain construction, but that it should be considered in the same way the legislature, legislation is considered if they're attempting, or it's purported they've done something retroactive. And I'd like you to explain why you believe this executive order is even amenable, why it is LaFontaine analysis applies.
Sure. The activities of the executive manager are created by the legislature. The executive manager cannot ask, act unless the legislature has granted it the authority to do so. So when interpreting an order of the executive manager, you not only have to interpret that order, but you have to interpret that order along with the grant of authority that the legislature gave it within the enabler-
The grant of authority is that of an 800-pound gorilla. He can do anything he wants, including abrogate collective bargaining agreements, other agreements, things that are unheard of in any other context. So he's authorized. So the question is, okay, I understand how you get there. He's authorized by the statute to do that. Why does what he does by executive order make it legislative in the same way that the LaFontaine situation?
Because he is acting under the instructions and the authority of the legislature. The legislature has said in this situation, you may have certain levels of authority, and in order to act upon those levels of authority, you have to satisfy certain conditions. But you are acting on behalf of and under the authority of the legislature.
The legislature creates agencies, but they aren't considered to be the legislature.
The interpretation of administrative regulations is similar to methods of interpretation of statutes.
But if the Public Act Four, which authorizes the emergency manager to do EO 225, itself says, "Hey, you're on notice. This could be retroactive," why isn't LaFontaine's concern already satisfied? Because LaFontaine is worried about how do we construe the legislation? We presume legislation is ordinarily not retroactive, but if the legislature makes it clear that they want it to be retroactive, then it can be retroactive.
Correct.
So why didn't in Public Act Four, the legislature make it clear, "Hey, gonna be retroactive"?
Public Act Four must be construed as not allowing the executive manager to make retroactive, or to take away vested rights retroactively unless it specifically says so.
Well, wait a minute. That's, the statute pretty much says you have the right to be, to take contracts out of existence.
I disagree, and let me explain why, okay? Because now, we're getting into the language of Public Act Four, and I disagree with your interpretation of the controlling sentence. The controlling sentence says that the executive manager may, and I quote, "reject, modify, or terminate," end quote, "a term of the collective bargaining agreement."
Yep.
It does not say that the manager, that the executive manager has the right to reject, modify, terminate, or eliminate vested rights. You could have an existing contract which creates duties that are still to exist and are bound to be performed in the future, and which creates future rights.
That's a different argument. That's an argument that what the EO does is ultra-viruses, not whether it has a retroactive effect. If it's ultra-virus, you've lost that argument.
I'm sorry, but I don't understand what your question is.
If it is beyond his power, under the statute, you've lost that argument below, right?
I disagree. No, I have not lost that argument, because I do not-
Wasn't there, wasn't that litigated below?
It was litigated below and-
And that determination, it wasn't beyond his powers, correct?
The trial court made that determination.
Okay.
And, okay, but-
And what the Court of Appeals did was not overturn that decision, just said, "This isn't retroactive."
That the, right, the Court of Appeals said that the terms of the executive order itself are not retroactive.
Correct. So the issue about whether the scope of this is within the executive powers is, oh, you go ahead.
What I'm saying, we're not connecting here.
Talk it out.
What I'm saying, you labeled it as an ultra-virous argument.
No, no. I was saying, you were saying he couldn't do this.
I'm saying that the Public Act Four did not give him the authority to retroactively eliminate vested rights under a CBA, because in order for Public Act Four to do that, it must state so unambiguously. Public Act Four is subject to the LaFontaine approach of interpretation.
So Public Act Four is not a silver bullet response to this LaFontaine question we're struggling with? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying Public Act Four is subject to the LaFontaine approach. And Public Act Four, the language of Public Act Four, and specifically sub-paragraph 1K, does not unambiguously state that the executive manager has the authority to retroactively eliminate vested rights under a collective bargaining agreement merely be-
He could eliminate the whole collective bargaining agreement.
But they could eliminate-
He's making a distinction between going forward and the vested rights.
Yes. It could eliminate future rights under the existing collective bargaining agreement. It cannot eliminate accrued vested rights unless it specifically says so.
Right.
And it did not specifically say so.
I think I follow you. Can I ask a question about, like, I feel a little bit like this case is, this case has like these new legs at every phase. I mean, the Court, we got here because the Court of Appeals decided this issue that wasn't put to them, right? And now, maybe we can say that's cured at this point, because everyone's had a chance to brief it and argue it in this court, although it's still a bit odd. And not your fault, but given that you, like them, are kind of addressing it for the first time in this court, you raised this LaFontaine question in your response of pleading, and we haven't, you know, no court before us has actually considered it, applied the factors, and should we care about that? I mean, no one's had a chance-
As far as preservation goes, I think that all the facts that are necessary are present, and it's an issue of law, and it's an issue of controlling law, and it's very, very, very significant to the jurisprudence of the state.
So you think we can figure it out ourselves, and it doesn't matter that no court before us has sort of applied the LaFontaine test and thought it through, and you trust us?
Sure. You have that 800-pound gorilla authority, or is it a 700-pound gorilla authority?
Well, isn't it fair to say that the Court of Appeals kind of engaged in LaFontaine analysis without announcing it?
Exactly. That's exactly what I was going to say.
And they weren't interpreting the words. They were interpreting something in the way that they would have this been considered subject to LaFontaine.
Correct. Unfortunately, the Court of Appeals opinion was not so artfully written, but yes, that's the effect of it. So I think that, I'm sorry, yes.
Good question. So what exactly are the vested rights here?
The vested rights are the rights to $3.5 million of contributions to the trust.
So it's the right of the trust to get contributions from the city?
Correct.
It's not a right of officers to draw on that trust?
Correct. The plaintiff is the Board of Directors of the trust itself.
So it's the right to receive contributions, and you think that's the vested right? And why, when did that vest?
When did it vest? Immediately before the executive order was implemented.
Because why? Because the payment was due?
Yes.
Well, in that sense, isn't it also vested that they are entitled to continue to get those payments?
No, that's the difference. No, that's not a vested right, because the rights to the future have not become vested yet. They have not accrued yet. They may be eliminated by the executive manager. But the executive manager did not have the authority to eliminate vested rights, rights that already vested, a payment, a contribution of $3.5 million that's overdue. The city was in default, essentially.
So if you have a provision that says, "If you are with us five years, you're entitled to a pension program that will be a percentage of your final salary," and if that is abrogated, those are, if you haven't retired, those rights are not vested. That promise of a pension plan based on your final salary is not vested.
As I understand your hypothetical, if it's a five-year-
You're vested, you're now entitled to rely on your pension being a percentage of your final salary, and the emergency manager says, "Nope, we're stopping the pension plan."
I would say that's improper.
That would be a vested right, that's being abrogated?
Yes.
And why are the right to these contributions not, under the collective bargaining agreement, equally vested?
Because they are rights in the future premised upon future employment.
Anything else?
Under your hypothetical.
Oh, one of the hypotheticals.
I'm sorry.
Never mind.
There's two, there is a final point that I want to address with respect to the interpretation of the executive order itself, without regard to the LaFontaine approach. There's two points of interpretation, I think, that at a minimum render the order ambiguous, okay? Number one was that he employed the words "to continue to make contributions," and he added the words "continue to," which I believe would be surplusage if you adopt the current position of the city. If you take away the words "continue to," and you have the same order, the order would read that the Article III of the trust agreement is amended to remove the obligations of the city to make contributions. That's all you would have. And that would be a little more clear, not perfectly clear, but a little more clear than the language used, which was to remove the obligations of the city to continue to make contributions.
Those are two different things. That's clarity of draftsmanship versus the surplusage canon. I don't think, I think it could have been clearer. It doesn't mean that it's not as interpreted. My understanding of the surplusage canon is that if you take words out, and as a result of taking words out, what's left is something identical to another phrase in the document. You've rendered those words a surplusage, and you can't have two provisions that are the same. So why does the surplusage canon apply here of construction? It seems to me there's, we're looking at one phrase, and it's just a matter of draftsmanship, not so much-
Or redundancy. Maybe it's redundancy then. But if you take out the words "continue to," what you have left is what the city is advocating.
It's the same thing.
It's the same thing. So why, so why would you put in the words "to continue to"?
Because when you're drafting, as opposed to legislation, if you're just writing, you could actually be redundant without violating a canon of construction.
Well, I think that redundancy is interpreting a statute so as to condone-
This isn't, that's my whole point. This isn't a statute, I don't think. Nobody's-
I understand that, but presuming that you would give an executive order the same level-
That's what I'm asking. Why should I?
Because he is acting under the auspices of legislative authority, and he is performing functions that the legislature said, "We're going to allow him to perform it."
So does the governor. When the governor issues an executive order, is operating, perhaps, do I treat his executive orders like legislation?
I think that when it comes to eliminating delinquent contributions, eliminating vested rights, in particular, under at least this unique scenario, you must. And you must require an unambiguous set of language which says, "This applies retroactively to eliminate vested rights." Now, I would ask the court also to give credence to the very last sentence of the executive order, which says, "The order shall have immediate effect." That by itself gives a prospective application, because it doesn't say that the order shall have retroactive effect to eliminate vested rights. It shall have immediate effect, which means to prospective rights. And we've cited the authority that supports that method of interpretation. Thank you.
Do you have anything further?
One point on this vested rights argument. I'm not sure I understand what the counsel's saying. I mean, and we can't confuse it with pension rights either, because there is a constitutional provision that vests pensions to public employees when they have accrued it by working. And that can't, that could not be removed by emergency manager. But healthcare doesn't have a vested right in the same sense as pensions do. And his definition, it seems to me that- And his definition, it seems to me that every single contract that calls for a payment due, there would be a vested right, because that's all he's talking about. There was a payment due.
Right, that's my, that's my question.
So I can't, I don't understand the distinction between this term vested rights.
Right, so is every time a payment is due, is that a vested right?
And I don't think that that changes it, if that's the definition.
Well, if it's not, then what is it? So you owe me money, it was due yesterday.
It's a breach of contract when you don't, it's a breach of contract, you didn't make the payment when you're supposed to make the payment. The vested right usually has a term of art that is different than, you just didn't make a payment on a contract.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a bit, we are concluded for the day.